Three in.
We're trending.
Yeah.
Two of them were probably me trying to get in for my iPad.
I set up Twitter like ten years ago when I got a BlackBerry, right?
A BlackBerry.
That's how long. Never used it. I have like two posts. And one of them read or something about my daughter, so I goes, my daughter, hey, this is. Somebody read that.
Until you're ready to start. Frankly, why this code might need to be revisited a little bit. There shall be no use of show windows. Or display. Or advertising visible outside the premises to attract customers. Or clients. Other than home occupation announcement sign as permitted. Yeah. For those who had had an opportunity to look at it, with any changes, additions and deletions.
I didn't have any. I'll make a motion except the minutes as presented.
Second. I guess do we have to go through the role? Cap, oh, you were.
I didn't.
You see them, Steve?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself. Okay, so then that takes us right up to seven o'clock and we'll officially start the meeting. First item on the agenda tonight is an application. By Mr. Corneles. Of sixty-four Mel Rhodes Road, looking for a special permit and a variance. For a freestanding sign for. Home-based occupation. Come on up. Have a seat and let's talk about it.
It, I sent a, an email out. I don't know if everybody got it or. If you didn't, it was, it was just today, so it's kind of a last minute.
Didn't see it? I, I, I printed a copy.
So. So the, the long or the short of it is. I screwed this process up from the start. I, I looked at the.
Yeah, that's water under the bridge.
I looked at the code. I, it said authorized sign. I didn't read any farther than that where it said, and then you have to do this, this and this. I put the sign up and it's, you know, here we are. So. Patrick brought it to my attention and I, you know, have made the application since then.
Now, now, look at, looking at the application, just a cou- a couple of questions. You, you have the, i- it's listed as the eighteen inch by thirty-six inch freestanding sign. So the sign itself is only eighteen by thirty-six.
Correct.
So it's under the six square feet.
Yes.
Okay. Second, second. How far this, I guess more for Patrick. On the right of way. For the roads, okay? A freestanding sign, if it was granted by special permit, has to be how far from the.
One side, the front yard distance, which in that. Zone and district is fifty feet, so it needs to be a minimum twenty-five feet.
Twenty, twenty, okay, just for, for clarification purposes for the rest of the board, technically. The Mr. Cornelius is looking for a, a, a variance on that, but I just wanted to. Lay out what the, what the requirement is, twenty, twenty-five feet.
So just for my, for, for purposes of my clarification as to what. Happens here, and I, I did put it in my letter, it's my understanding that the, that we're doing kind of two different things here. What is the, the special permit to authorize the, the, the freestanding sign? You know, because you can't have it without a special permit. And then, and then beyond that, the variance to, to say it go, it can go here, right?
Yeah, ideally, ideally, that would be the, the, the situation. There, there's a question of whether or not, and I, I, I got, I guess I gotta, you know. First, get a little bit more information for you, and then I wanna, I wanna open to the board to, to see. The interpretation that everybody has, because I. I thought we were, I thought we were hemmed in by the code on this one. A perfectly honest year, but I don't know if, if everybody was looking at it the same way, so I, I, you know, I wanna, I wanna open.
What do you mean by that?
Well. The way, and it goes, if, if, it goes to the, the issue of home-based occupation. Mr. Cornelius, anytime you get a home-based occupation, it's an accessory use. Your home is the primary.
Yes.
Okay, so this is an accessory use. Lascaux Code one fifty twenty permits. Home. Occupation, so. Good in all zones, okay? I, I wanna paint by the numbers here, okay? When you look at one fifty twenty, I, I, I'll, I'll read it through just. Just to the particular point that caused the concern. And, and I, I have a feeling that's why all these other ones have been denied in the past, but I wanna, I just wanna be clear on it. It says a cust- accessory uses customary home occupation for game. A home-based occupation is an activity that conforms to the following regulations. The home occupation shall be carried on wholly indoors. Within the principal building. Or when the, within a building or other structure accessory there too, so I guess you could have. A situation where you have an accessory structure and have the home-based business wholly within. This, this is the, this is the provision that I thought caused the issue. And, and frankly, why this code might need to be re- revisited a little bit. There shall be no use of show windows. Or display. Or advertising visible outside the premises to attract customers. Or clients. Other than home occupation announcement sign as permitted. So then. When, when you look. At the sign section, it talks specifically one fifty dash five, and I think. Excuse me. One fifty thirty-five first, okay?
I'm sorry, one fifty thirty-five?
Yeah, one fifty thirty-five, I believe. I'm sorry for jumping around on all of you. But we, we've, we've looked at this a number of times. A special, excuse me. On premises, on premise permanent sign attached. To the principal structure. And six square feet or less may be erected with a permit. So this particular sign being six square feet or less could be attached to the building. And Patrick could s- sign off on that.
Right, but he does already have a sign.
What I'm saying is he, the sign that's currently there is much smaller than this one. Okay, I, I, I'm just, I, I'm trying to expedite all of this. To get it all laid out on the table, save everybody headed. Okay. Now. What's. What kind of catches my eye? It says now a special permit with respect to size, location and installation or any on-premises size. More than six square feet and for all. On-premises freestanding sign. So the question that I, I have for the board is. Because it's a home-based occupation, is it the board's interpretation that only a sign attached to the. Occupation can be done and not a freestanding one?
That's what we have done in the past.
Well, that's why.
I guess when I'm, that's when I'm looking at this, I, we don't define.
There is no.
Announcement.
No, there is not, and there is not a definition of premises in the code.
Yeah, but when I look at, there's be no sign, in other words, home occupation announcement sign, is that limited to? Enter here, you know, close this day.
I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think of, but I, 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 I don't think so. I mean, you gotta be able to tell who's, you know, what, what. What's going on in a, in a business like, you know, you, you put, instead of pulling up the house, but at the same time. In that, in that area, there are a number of signs. I mean, and Mr. Cornelius rightly points out, you, you, you know, you, you see the freestanding sign for Dickman's. You see Smiley's, you go up a little further. And, and so. I think he's right in terms of the argument. That it, it really doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. However, we have not, I, as far as I know, none of those businesses are home occupations. Okay, they're all pre-existing. Businesses from our, from our code, that, this code came into effect, those businesses were already all there. To a certain extent, there may have been a change in use, but they're not home-based businesses. I'm trying to think of all of the other.
Prior to the code.
Yeah, prior, prior to the code, as far as, as far as I know, I. Because we don't have a commercial zone within this, within this town at all.
But Dave, if you.
So, you, 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 you know, we may change one use, like a liquor store for a barber shop, but it was still.
There was a sign.
There was already there.
But here's what I would say, if, if you're saying that, that other than home occupation announcement is not an incidental. Enter here, then it seems to be carving out. An, an exception. That. To allow that, if it's permit, when you go back to fifty dash twenty. There should be no use of show windows or displays, advertising visible outside the premises. It's an awful word to use when you're talking about the dwelling, right?
What page is that?
Steve, where, where are you?
Fifty, well, the page on the bottom is fifty dash fifty-four, the sections.
You, you, you're talking accessory use.
The one you read.
The one you first read.
Yes, that's right. I just wanna be clear.
Yeah, outside the premises to attract customers or clients. Other than home occupation signs, home occupation announcement signs is permitted.
As permitted.
So as permitted, then you would go. Isn't that drives us back to a special use permit?
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, but even if we allow it, it would still go against the signage portion of the code, right?
It would.
Yes. So like, we can agree, like that part, I agree, like that, that's an announcement sign, but it still would, if we say yes to that, we can't, we have to say yes to both the signage and that.
What, what signage portion are you referring to?
The, it has to be, or it, what was, it has to be affixed to the.
No, but we can give a special use permit for a freestanding sign.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanted to, that is exactly why I wanted to debate and flesh out what, what the board members are thinking about this, because. I, I, I'm, I'm just thinking in the past of the freestanding sign applications, we had. There, you know, I, I, I'm not, yeah. I'm not opposed to, yeah, I, I, I don't wanna steer in one direction or another, but I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to think of precedential value here.
There's, there's, there will be two signs on the property.
Which is allowed.
It'd actually be allowed for.
The one on the.
Property, but I would never wanna do that.
The one on the building. And then this free standalone one.
Yeah, thirty-five goes.
You're correct. It would be, it would be the second sign.
It would be the second.
But the other one is attached.
Oh, there's a tab.
And that's permitted, so that doesn't really.
It is, but it's small.
Maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
I'm just saying, that's already permitted.
It is permitted.
That's not, that's not an issue. This is the one that's.
This, the freestanding one is the, is the issue.
So we don't, I mean, it doesn't matter to us if he has one on the building. I don't think.
So then is the question, is it a announcement, a business announcement which is allowed by the code? That's the only question we have to answer to.
Yeah, I, I think then we go through the special permit process to say. Now, as required with respect to size, location for. Yeah, so the tat sign is more than six square feet. And all freestanding sign, so if it were tats in the building, less than six square feet.
No question, no question, I, I don't think anybody has a, an issue. What, what I, what I look to is what this board has done in the past, and I, and it makes me a little bit, you know, crazy. Because we've had. Freestanding sign for Tom Thumb.
But that was also a triangle issue.
Well, no, that ultimately, that was gonna be pushed back and it was, it was.
Cause it was a site issue.
Correct, he wanted it closer to the right.
So we have to look at that for sure.
Okay.
And we also in there looked at. I believe a lot of the discussion was around the, the square footage of the existing signage on the building was well in excess.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Reasons.
Yeah.
But we weren't looking at whether a sign or not was allowed. We were looking at. Right, like, I think the board, I kinda went back at it, so location, there, there was other existing signs that would.
We would have allowed a sign had it been in the right, like, we were gonna allow it.
I don't know if we would or not.
But that's also pre-existing non-conforming, so it's different.
Exactly. Well, it's not a home-based occupation. See that, and, and the, the distinction, I was looking at, I was thinking of. When we just did a, a bag of nickels, we, we did not allow the sign, any freestanding sign, it had to be smaller on the building. If you remember the hairstylist who came in. Right next door to Bag of Nickels, and I'm, the name is escaping me. The State Farm sign that was pre-existing. And we would not allow that. We, we had the issue with.
So, but what you're setting up is a distinction between a pre-existing non-conforming business.
Business.
That brings customers onto the side.
Yeah, those are, they're to encourage, so if you, if you look at that, that definition.
Is bag, what is Bag of Nickels, is that a? So those are totally different.
So, you know. So you're saying you think we looked at fifty, one fifty thirty-six. That just a non-conforming sign, so we kept painting.
Yeah, if the signs were there, we can't do, we can't do anything about it, other than they allow repairs and things of that nature. We can't let them do a figure, but we can, we're, we're kinda stuck with them.
And then in Article eight, we also have continuation of existing non-conforming structures and usage. So there, if you go to one fifty forty, followed by one fifty thirty-six, kinda sets what we've been doing, which is to say. The new sign needs to be smaller than the exist, or, or the same, fit in the same footprint.
Yeah, exactly, see, yeah, I was, I was thinking of, we, we had the issue with the Rosa, with the, the sign off the building. And then that was another business that was a former. The bed and breakfast, which we didn't allow a sign at all. Freedman's. I'm trying to think, but I, I'm unaware, maybe somebody can cite me to it. In, in a home-based occupation, have we ever permitted a sign?
Well, the. Be a home-based occupation.
So a home-based. No, but a, a, a home-based occupation, have we ever allowed a freestanding sign, I guess, that's the. I mean.
Well, if you're saying we shut down the one for the bed and breakfast, that is a home-based occupation, same idea.
We did, we didn't allow it, so you have to remember. It was concerned with the, I mean. It's all relative because the, because of location, okay? The, the bed and breakfast was situated in a house of, at an area with lake homes, you know, and. Everything that used in that area was completely residential. Here, it's not completely residential, it's, you, you, you've got somewhat of a mix.
I think the character of the neighborhood is the key.
And so that's, that, that's the question I, I posed to you guys, you know.
My interpretation of the home-based business announcement was that it was. The name of the, of the business, that was, that was my interpretation of what that was. I don't think that, I don't think that you could put. You know. I don't know, you know, some, whatever your, your inventory list or.
Absolutely, and, and I tend, tend to agree, the name of the business, I get.
Versus.
So, so. I mean, then it's a question of, of how, so we haven't allowed it in the past, the character of neighborhood hasn't changed, so, I mean, there is precedent one way. I don't think it changes the character of neighborhood, the question is, is a matter of policy, looking at the code, do you want? Everyone with a home-based business.
That isn't the point, we're looking at it as character of the neighborhood in this particular case, and it's case by case. That's my opinion, I mean, I know you want to set precedent, but.
Well, that's, well, that's exactly what we already kind of have, and, and I just want to, you got to treat everybody kind of fairly, and that, you know, that's always. Uniform application is important, you know, but everybody's circumstances, every, every location is different. And, and so.
Yeah.
So the other, the other thing I would mention is that um. I have, I have spoken, I know there was one, one neighbor down the road that, that sent in a, a concern, and, and part of it was. Based on the fact that I went out of order, and I concede that. I spoke with researchers across the road, because they would be the most kind of impacted by, you know, have, because our driveways are. Are opposing driveways, and, and he didn't have any concerns, I know that. You know, a, a letter gets sent out, and, and to my knowledge, there was only one response, I guess there could have been more. The other thing I would say is the. It is unlikely in, with, with my business and my type of business, that. There, I mean, there would never be more than one person at a time, and there would. The, the vast majority of my business is criminal consultation cases, which are remote in nature. Occasionally, there is a, a, a person who will, who will come to the, to my home office, but. It's not, it's not daily, you know, it's not, so there, there wouldn't be a, an increased traffic issue. I'm willing to, to, you know, if, if proximity to the road is an issue, I'm willing to, to.
That, that could, that's. Definitely is an issue. Can I, can I ask either Patrick, uh, or Tom? Just a matter of procedure here. And the special use permit procedure. Seems, seems to suggest always with a site plan. And. I'm curious as to. If you look at one fifty sixty-two.
Age section. Age of section.
Section.
What's the page of the boundary?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, we, we, we do this, whatever we're doing right. And, and, and we've, and, and, well, this goes to the other issue that I, I. Mister, actually, Mr. Cray, as you raised today with your letter that caught my eye was. An application on a special use permit is not deemed uh, complete. If. There's, my understanding, it says, no application shall be deemed complete if the zoning enforcement officer shall determine that a variance. Would be required from the zoning board of appeals in connection with the use of the premises.
So you need to grant the variance first.
Yeah, the question, so.
For the use of the premises, but that, I don't think that's within.
Well, that's, that's kind of where I'm going.
Yeah, I don't think that's in this board's, to say whether he can have a.
I don't think so either.
No, that's not what this.
No, but that's.
That would be if somebody asked us if they can use, like, the horse pasture, for instance, in a residential.
Yeah, I, I just.
That's different.
I just want to, I just want to be, I just want to be clear on it. Is, is that, Patrick, you're, I mean, we would have to determine the variance first? Mr. Blair, some guidance?
There's also, it states that the special use permit is with respect to. Size, location, and installation. For any. On premises, freestanding sign.
Every municipality I represent has a procedure for home occupations, and they typically include site plan review in secret because of lighting, traffic, visitation. And, and most boards take a quick look at it, because most of it has zero impacts. So, I don't know how you've been doing it here, but it would seem to suggest to me that where it says no application shall be deemed complete if. Patrick determines a variance would be required for the use of the premises, I think when they say use of the premises, it's also the layout that encompasses all that.
Well, see, what I'm getting at is, under our code. You can have a special, it's permitted in every zone, they don't have to come for a special permit for a home-based occupation. Okay, it is an absolute. Allowed thing. So we're not.
But there's a code impact as well, because there's home occupations under local zoning codes, and there's home occupations, and they have district, different criteria under the. Uniform Fire Prevention Building Act.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Depending upon the kind of use, so. Quite frankly, I.
I'm just trying to get order of process here, just, just so we, we do things right.
A wood shop and their accessory structure, that might come into, that type of, they might have an issue pertaining to.
I don't believe that would qualify as a home occupation. Is, is permitted.
Yeah.
Is a permitted home occupation.
So. Do we look at the special permit first, or we look at the variance first?
What variance are you trying to get?
It's a.
It's supposed to be.
Backs only, not for the type of business or anything else.
Setback only. The location of the sign, exactly.
Required to be twenty-five feet from the edge of the right away, and it's only one foot from the edge.
That's a large variance. I mean. It's twenty, twenty-four feet. And, and in his case, the poor guy, he's, he's got three front yards. We've been down that road, yeah, no, we've been down that road before, but I'm just saying, so. No matter where we try to go. Outside of maybe to the west.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it also says you can't be within, within fifteen feet of any side boundary.
Oh, no, I, I, that's what I'm saying, so.
There's a spot that's permitted about this bag.
It, it's not much, I, I agree.
I mean, the variances are large, that we'd have to. Review in order for the sign to fit. Within the guidelines of the code that we're dealing with right now. Would you say, Pat, twenty-five feet?
Well, how far is the building from the, from the right away?
The corner of my house sits about two feet from the right away, because right away comes diagonally across from the point. The corner.
Yeah, because the roadway runs at a diagonal.
Northwest corner of my house, the, the bush on the corner actually is in the right away of the. So it's, it's right close to the. The house, because of where it sits, and because it's a sixty-foot right away, um, on every side of the house, because of the roads. It. It, it's pretty significant. But as I, as I said, if, if. The board determined that they were going to allow a sign, you know, a, a special, specially permitted sign, then. I can. I submitted four different uh. Proposals as to what. With cool pictures too, by the way.
Any thoughts, Ford?
I'm going to put it and give to him.
Put it on the side of the house.
Well, the problem with that, and, and that was something that I talked to Patrick about, the problem with that is, I think that. I think that that would actually be more unsightly than. That, you know, this, this, you know, framed sign, you know, screwed into the, to the. Siding of the house, because it can't, it can't extend beyond. I think that would be more unsightly in the neighborhood than, than having uh, the freestanding sign, which. Again, I, I understand that it's, that it's encroaching on the right away, and, and I'm fully, you know. Willing to dig it up and move it back. As a matter of fact, that the one image of it there on the, on the bottom, where it's, that's, that's. Twelve feet from the right away, and thirty feet actually from the roadway. And that's, that would kind of go with the flagpole that's already there.
Now, have we, let me, let me, any board members have any more questions about? Let me open the floor to the general public, do we have anybody here to speak either for or against this proposal? I'm wondering if we should, I want, I'm wondering if we should open the public hearing.
If, if that's your intent tonight, I would say. For sure. I thought you opened it as.
I, 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 oh, yeah, I did, actually, I, I, I opened me up, yes, I did, it was, yeah. This is all in the public realm. Again, let me, again, anybody here to speak for or against? All right, I want the record to reflect that there is nobody to speak for or against the proposal. Uh, any more discussion on this?
Basically, it's going to stay where it is right now, as far as the variance for the front yard.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, I, I mean.
I'm happy to, if that's the.
Well, I mean, maybe, 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 you know.
No, I'm just.
On a special permit, you can put conditions, correct, so, you know, if you don't, if, 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 if the board is. Of the mind that. It's okay to put a sign up of this nature for a home occupation, then the, then the next question is, do you want to put a condition on it? So as to, in, in terms of its location with respect to the right of way. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong on that.
I would be willing also to say, in my unique circumstance with being, uh, having the three roadways there, I'd be. I'd be fully okay with a condition put on it, saying that, that, because it does say in the code that.
You're allowed.
You can put one on each roadway, I have no intention of doing that, and I'd be happy to voluntarily.
Yeah, you have one roadway that's a primary, and the others are secondary.
Last thing I need is more things to mow around.
Yeah, one of these that they would have a sign. I was looking at the definition of home occupation, and the list in addition to this, barber shops, tailers, realtors, which all would. Come with us.
Absolutely.
Would come with the sign.
Absolutely, that's, that, you know, you, you got to anticipate, you know, I mean, I. You got to anticipate that you'll be seeing this again. That's all. I mean.
Like Kathy said, it'll be a case-by-case basis on neighborhood characters of it. In this case.
So you, you, you're saying, basically, a case-by-case basis, given, given the character of the neighborhood? So you, you're saying, if I understand you correctly, Kathy, you, you don't have as much of an issue with this on Melrose. Because of the church, Dickman Farms, and whatever. As, as you would on East Lake Road, or.
Sure, depending on whether the character of the neighborhood is affected by that somewhere.
Yeah, but aren't we speaking about a residential area? I mean, so, now we're going to put definitions, we're going to. I, I, I don't understand, I'm kind of getting confused there with everything that's going on, it's still a residential area, we don't have any commercial zones. In Owasco, the town of Owasco, the church was there prior to. The code, Dickman's was there prior to the code, Smiley's was there. Prior to the code, since we have, the town has enacted the code. We have been strict. All these, all these bed and breakfasts, all these beauticians, all the other people that requested it when they came before us. We're strict about it. He has a sign, he has an approved sign on the side that's accepted. Now. It's unfortunate for him that he has three front yards, but that's. Three front yards, I just, and he needs a twenty-five-foot variance. To put the sign, even if he moves it someplace, he's going to need a variance.
If he has it twelve feet from the roadway, he wouldn't need a twenty-five-foot sign, right now, he has it thirty feet from the roadway and twelve feet from the right way.
That's where I, that's.
That's where it would be moved to.
That's where I could move it to.
Guess what I'm struggling with is, we, we, when you look at the list of home occupations. The majority of them, you would, if you've got a, a small psychologist's office, there'd be a sign. Right, if you had a beauty shop or a barber shop, there'd be a sign, now, like, I guess are we saying that the only acceptable sign? Is attached to the building on those types of businesses? But once we're allowing that type of business, then I think the variance comes back into, isn't that just a variance that we would?
Right.
Give under special use.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, so what, I mean, what, what's your thought, that, you know, is. As a matter of policy and practice is. Is it your thought, that, you know, this, this, this raised this issue to the forefront? I can't remember a freestanding sign for a home occupation, but then again, I'm sitting back, and I'm trying to search my memory banks, I've been around quite a while. I'm not sure we had a specific, other than the bed and breakfast. And, and they kind of conceded the point that they didn't want the signage, because they weren't looking for foot fit traffic.
Is really, fits under home.
Didn't, didn't the Rosa want a freestanding sign?
Yeah.
And that was denied him. On his building up there, but they had pre, they had previous. We don't have any commercial areas in the town of Owasco.
My, my.
Could I just finish what I'm saying? So, at that time, he wanted to put a sign up, the previous owners that owned the building before. Had that sign on the front, that was allowed. And that's where his sign is, that's all I'm saying, is we've been strict about this, we haven't wavered. And this is a good point that, that he, he brought this up.
Absolutely.
That's my opinion. And that's all it is, is my opinion.
I'm sorry, my, uh, my only, my only point was that, that the difference is home-based business versus a, a. Fully commercial structure, electorals, that was my point, that they're, they're apples and oranges, they're.
Follow the proper procedure in order to do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're also looking at site triangles and all that when we're doing signs, and how big they are.
Yeah.
There's a lot involved.
Sure. So what's, I mean, what's the preference? Anybody? Anybody want to make a motion on this? One way or, one way or another? Well, it's, it's up to you, I mean, you, you have more to add? I mean, are we, should we be addressing the variance request first? Or the special permit? Or the special permit issue first?
I think that the seminal issue is the chicken and the egg is whether or not he can have the sign. I know what the code says, but you as a board can vary the code as long as it's reasonable and it's not unconstitutional. So, I think however you feel as a board, like.
Well, I, 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 listen, I'm just trying to direct this conversation and get the feel from each of the board members whether they feel that this is an acceptable for all, acceptable under their interpretation of the code, whether these type of signs are permitted or not. If they are, then great, if they aren't, great.
No, but I think where we're at is it's just a normal decision of the board of whether we want the sign or not. And if, and to your point, if we haven't approved them, if, I don't think it's a matter of precedence, more of a matter of, he's got a home-based occupation. There's a sign, and is it a variance we want to grant or not?
Yeah, that's where I'm at. But to your point.
Talking of variance, you mean the special permit or the variance?
Well, we have to take them both, right? Both together, right?
Yeah, okay. So the, the question is, as a board, do you, do you, you, you feel one way or another, looking at the code interpretation, whether it's allowed or not?
But again, that's back to attorney's counsel's point of, it's the board's decision that whether we approve them that or not. I don't think our option is, it's not allowable at all to have the, come before the board, because what would be the other alternative? Did you say the sign just can't exist because the code says it can't exist? Is that kind of what you're thinking the alternative is?
Well, yeah, it, 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 sort of, whether their interpretation of the code permits a freestanding, freestanding sign for a home-based occupation. If, if the board's feeling is that it does, then let's throw a motion on the, on the floor and let's, let's go.
I think the special use permit allows us to, yes, to grant it, but like to Jerry's point, I mean, if we haven't been along and people are gonna come up, but aren't, you know, that's the other issue. So I feel like we're in a question.
We are in a question too, and that's, I mean.
That's why we're the board.
That's why we're.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm getting at. I, I think, I, you know, I don't, the way it's structured, you're right, it almost envisions a special use is for the larger businesses that are conforming. So I don't know if they've ever envisioned that you would use that for the sign of a home-based occupation.
Exactly. And then the question, the question is, for example, if I'm a lawyer, and I decided that, you know, I don't want to practice downtown anymore, I want to work out of my house. Can I put a sign up?
For you, no.
Me, attorney as law. Not that I really want to. Or, or, or.
You can have a sign as long as it's attached to the building. Our code says that that's fine. It's just, we're saying we don't want the freestanding signs with all the special use.
Yeah.
So we have to consider, my opinion is whether we feel it's necessary for him to have freestanding or not. I mean, it's a.
Hey, there's a tough one. It's, you know, nothing's always easy. Well.
I say go for it.
What would you say, Kathy?
I say go for it. Well, you got to put your variance within.
Yeah, within the motion.
And the variance, we should, at least we could, right? The least amount of variance.
Yeah. Where'd it go?
If we're gonna.
And that has the benefit of the board also kind of slapping my hand for going out of order, making me dig up.
Well, we should.
So.
Well, we, we should.
Yeah, that's the one that you're going to move that 12 feet off the property.
So I'll move it, I would move it to, you were out there, right? There's a flagpole out there, go over to the back, to the house side of the flagpole, which is the ideal. It would be 12 foot off the line, 30 feet from the actual edge of the roadway.
We have to wait for the motion.
I hear you put on the floor.
13 foot.
You just don't have the daycare sign across.
Well, that's true.
I don't have an issue.
Got a motion?
That you would. Okay, I'll make a motion to grant Frederick Cornelius of 64 miles, Rowan, Tonawal, Osko, tap, tax map number 116-19 or, um, dash 3, dash 7.1, a special permit under use, under section 10150-35, paragraph B, which states a special permit is required with respect to size, location, installation for any on-premises attached sign more than six square feet in area and for all on-premises freestanding signs. I'll also make a motion to grant a 13-foot front yard variance to install freestanding sign under section 154-34, general regulations, paragraph G, which states most signs shall be located nearer the street than have to require distance. 50 foot is required building setback for table of dimensional requires for the Tonawal Osko. Location of the sign is going to be set at 12 feet off the right of way. Okay, Mr. Cornelius has three front yards because his property is a triangle, which has a different street on each side. In making this motion, zoning board of appeals has taken into consideration the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and has determined the following. There is no undesirable change in the neighborhood. The sign meets a square foot requirements of no more than six square feet. More than 4.5 square feet. The height of the sign is five feet. The maximum allowed is 10. The bishop position of the sign does not interfere with perisite triangle regarding traffic. It is reasonable, Mr. Cornelius, we want to sign, I want to sign to aid in his business. There was no one here to speak for or against. Oh, uh, it's a variance and special is approved. It feels, does it have to go to the planning board?
Special use permit required.
Yeah, okay, a variance and special permit are approved by the zoning board of appeals. It must go to the planning board for final approval.
Can we add something that it must be well-maintained?
Oh, absolutely.
Must be well-maintained.
Yes. Well, that's in the code. Yeah, but there, there's also one letter from someone opposed to it.
That's right. Well, yeah, there, yeah, the record should reflect there was a complaint.
Or, okay, there was one letter that was a.
I don't know whether it was verbal or in writing, but there was a neighbor complaint.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we made the point that there were several, like, signs in the area that baited.
There were signs in the area.
Yeah, specifically, specifically Dickman's Farms with multiple freestanding signs, Smiley Forest at the beginning of Melrose, um, Sacred Heart Church, and what am I missing?
The only other one I noted was the, the big Dickman sign at the, at the end of the road.
All right. Jim?
Yes.
Okay, we got a second. Kathy? Jim?
Yes.
Kathy? Steve?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Sherry?
No.
Myself? No. Carrot, motion carries.
So now I go.
To planning.
I'll talk to Patrick about what.
Yes, site, site plan. That, that's why I was getting into the issue of site plan always really involves, always requires planning. And often it's the question, the chicken, whether you go to planning before us or we, we go first. But since there was a variance request, I think we had to decide the variance before what the planning, planning wouldn't decide if we would say no on the variance. Crazy.
Well, thank you for your.
Yeah, yeah. Do I have to do it by formal motion? I, I, I move to close the, the Cornelius public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. I'm going to figure we do it instead of a roll. Okay, how's that sound? Next item on the agenda. Okay, it's a continuation of a hearing started many months ago. Going back to. Well, yeah, going back to House May, but actually, uh, May, of this year. And that was the Everest Park proposal. Seeing a change or not a change, yeah, an amendment of the special use permit previously granted. Uh, get a representative of Everest Park. Come on up.
Do you want to open the, the continuation of the public hearing? Are you going to hold off?
I'm going to hold off for, for additional, I, I don't want to open it up yet. I want to get the additional information that we had talked about. And then, then we'll, then we'll reopen it. Do we have to reopen it? We have to reopen to do seeker, right?
I would reopen it. You don't have to do seeker in a public hearing, but it's always fine. It's recommended.
Yeah. Good seeing, good seeing you again.
Thank you for having us back. Um, tonight, I, I guess I should know that I, I'm representing Champions for Life. We are the tenants of Everest Park. The owners of their property is the Everest Association for Family Enrichment. Um, as most of you will recall, last time we met, my father was here, Paul Crevanero. He is the, I think, the secretary treasurer of that organization. He's actually in Florida and can't be here tonight, so I'm also actually representative. I know, and it's his birthday.
Sure.
So he's a, he's probably having a better time than we are tonight. But, um, so he's a, I'm acting as a representative of both Champions for Life and Everest Park, or Everest Association. So, thank you very much for having me back.
Well, yeah, there, there, I, I guess we ought to recap, okay? Just so everybody is familiar with what was originally done. I, I, I don't want to, we don't have to go into the deep, excruciating detail we did last time.
I will make an attempt at a brief recap if you'd like.
Yeah, it could, could we?
Sure. So some years ago, I, I want to say in the, in the late 2000s, um, the, yeah. Oh, nine. So the original application was.
It was 2008.
2008.
March 27.
Wow, thank you very much. March 27, 2008. Um, and then again, in March of, it looks like 2009, Everest Association made an application for a special use permit at Everest Park, um, for, for the park and Champions for Life to hold events there. It was initially granted with the idea that it would be a relatively small sort of undertaking, and it has grown significantly since then. So two years ago now, almost two years, two years in the spring, Mr. Bullard, who's, who's here tonight, put together a petition with a number of residents from North Road in that neighborhood, asking, or really sort of looking to sort of to understand why we were having these, what, what felt, I'm sure, like much, 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 much larger events than we were initially granted permission for. Um, so, so that's really what brought us back here. Um, we have been in the last, since 2014, holding lacrosse tournaments, other types of events up at Everest Park. Um, we, the original plan was to have quite a different setup up there. There were, there were talks of cabins and camps and.
Well, that, that's what originally was approved, correct?
Right. Um, I, I think in, in fact, the original application also included an approval for something like seven fields.
Six major soccer lacrosse fields. Two basketball.
Yeah.
Tennis courts.
There were baseball.
Uh, yes, no lights, and also they had a caretaker's house and the other house that's up there, plus how many cabins? I think there was 15 or 20.
Yeah, so, so the current existing sort of physical nature of the park is the, is the caretaker's house, which has been transformed into the Brian Briscoe, this is a home of courage. There is no other home there. Um, there's another house there. There's a, there's a barn that holds equipment. There's the pavilion that's been there for as long as I can remember, down by the ponds. And there are five full-size fields and, and that is.
And that is the as-built currently.
As-built currently.
So, just so the, the record adequately reflects this, we have, we, we had anticipated, I, I forget how many acres, not.
Nine acres out of 153.
Out of the 153 set aside for those type of activities, fields, I think six or seven fields, but only five of which were built.
Right. We, we had an existing field at the time of application. We built four additional fields, so for a total of five.
For a total of five. Now, how has the use, you know, since, I mean, 2008 changed in terms of the number of tournaments and number of?
Really saw an increase in the, in the number of events that we were having, um, oddly, in the summer of 2020, when the state and the local governments and local schools, excuse me, were not allowing practices to take place on municipal properties, on school properties. As a private property, we were able to hold practices and other types of outdoor events for kids to participate in the sporting sports programs that they weren't not being allowed to participate in at school. Excuse me. Um, so we saw our, our use really blow up in 2020. Um, it, it sort of leveled off in 2021, and we've actually decreased a little bit in 2022. In 2021, we held tournaments over the course of 14 days. Excuse me. And in 2022, we held tournaments on, it'll be a total of 10 days this year. Once we're done with the season, we have three more tournament days left. So we actually reduced our, our tournament days. Our numbers in terms of participants have increased. But we've done a number of different things to address the increase in those numbers in response to Mr. Bullard's and the North Road residents petition, petition in.
What type of mitigation efforts have you made?
Excuse me. Uh, we've been working with the Kew County Sheriff's Department. We let them know before every event, we asked them for increased traffic controls. If they're able to send additional people out, they do. Um, they, we, we've asked for, you know, the, the speed control device, but the, the monitor speed for people. The, the last time that we requested that was later, or, or excuse me, earlier this past summer, and at the time it was broken. Um, we haven't asked for it since then because I, I didn't know if it had been fixed or not. We also notify all of our participants and all of our coaches for every event that we're having, you know, every, every time we have an event, we send out an email letting them know about the, sort of the rural nature of the area. Uh, we ask them to be mindful of the people that live in that area.
Making any efforts to get the, the participation to see the carpool or anything.
We, we recommend carpooling. Um, we've also spread our tournaments out quite a bit. So where, you know, in 2021, um, we were really interested in kind of getting in and getting out as quickly as possible. During the tournament day, we, we've changed that approach and really spread that out over the day so that we might have our first games at eight o'clock in the morning or 8:30 in the morning, and really tried to spread it out until, you know, 5:30, 6 o'clock in the evening so that we don't have that massive influx of traffic all at once. Instead, it's really spread out throughout the days to try to decrease the number of cars that are lined up on North Road, which I know has been, was one of the components of the petition. So, excuse me, um, we've also investigated the use of a busing service. Um, it was, was one of the recommendations that came from Mr. Bullard's petition. Um, we submitted the, the estimates for that at the last, at the last hearing. They were really, really high.
11,000.
Yeah, for, for one. I mean, and to do that for all of our tournaments, we wouldn't, it would defeat the purpose of holding the tournaments. You know, and the purpose of holding those tournaments is really to provide the financial, uh, financial base that allows us to operate Brian, Brian, this is a home of courage. So they're really tied together there. Um, we have, uh, also split our large age range tournaments into two-day tournaments.
Okay, instead of doing K through 12.
One day, we'll do K, uh, we'll do K through eight one day, and we'll do, you know, varsity and JV on the next day.
How, how does that impact the things?
Um, well, in my opinion, um, it's harder to find volunteers to come for what amounts to a, a 12-day, on Saturday, 12-day, 12 hours, excuse me, 12 hours on Saturday, 12 hours on Sunday event. Um, I think, uh, it's probably lessened the congestion of traffic on a given day, uh, because, you know, we don't have all of those people coming on one day. Um, but it's worked. I mean, we've, we've made every effort we can to, to really work with our tournament. But it's worked. I mean, we've we've made every effort we can to to really work with our tournament participants, coaches, parents, volunteers to be mindful. We have, we made signs that we have put along the exit road from Everest Park, requesting people to exit to the south, to the right, so that they're not traversing the same part of North Road. We can't require them to do that. We've asked the Sheriff's Department, and they've said, no, we can't require them to do it. We can suggest it. It's been moderately successful, but most people, especially locals, they know which way they want to go, and to the right is generally not the way they want to go.
So you engage the services of any experts, engineers, I I we've received a report.
Right, from the, the RZ engineering letter that we sent you guys.
Yeah, so what was the nature of the the request?
So at our last, our last appearance, it was suggested that we obtain the services of a traffic engineer to do what was at the time called a traffic letter, but it turned into a little bit more than that. And we really, what we did was kind of give them the history of what we had been doing up there up until the point of the last hearing, and this is what the problems have been. And, you know, this, these are some of the issues that were were brought up, you know, this heavy use of the, heavy use of the roads, is it damaging to the roads, is it sustainable for the area, that sort of thing. And Ruby's
Zona.
Zona, yeah, Ruby Zona, who is a, who's an engineer, he from RZ Engineering, he he did a, took a look at, took a look at the traffic data for North Road for the you know, he he looked at the current road conditions, ingress and ingress, and, and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, well, I I was just trying to get a a feel for the nature of what the request was. I mean, generally, I think what he does is looks at the the roadway itself, whether the whether the road in terms of design and capabilities are adequate to
Support that.
Support that kind of traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether that, you know, whether there were any type of safety concerns, given the rural nature of the roadway, the size of the roadway, speed limits and and the and the like. Look, a little less, you know, and this is just the nature of engineers, I guess. From my read of it is he doesn't really deal too much with the aesthetic type of analysis, you know, like noise generated vis- and visual impact, things of that nature.
Well, and we didn't ask him to, you know, our request of him was really the suggestion of this body. When when we went to him, it was with this, with the concern at the last meeting that
Well, yeah, because
can these roads handle this sort of traffic?
Yeah, well, I think I think the inquiry generally was, a number of the neighbors suggested that there may have been concerns regarding the speed, traffic, you know, potential for accidents, incidents, and things of that nature. So we wanted to do a little deeper delve, you know, dive into that to make sure that the road was adequate to support what was going on.
Right.
My, I mean, my read of it, and then other people can, you know, read it, but in terms of the road itself, it it has more than adequate design capacity for the nature of what this was going on there.
Certainly, yeah.
It it's not a shock to me.
No, I, and it wasn't, I mean, I think it really, for us, it kind of confirmed what we guessed was that, you know, the roads themselves could handle the traffic. And I think that letter confirmed that.
Anything else done in terms of, I mean, you know, in terms of the mitigation efforts with respect to take, I guess, noise, visual impacting, other than what you've mentioned? You know, into splitting things up, spreading the traffic out, putting some, you know, the the sign up, you know, I think, so I mean, I'm just, I just wanted to get it out there.
If we've done, no, we, that is, that
Because, because, I mean, we're talking. I, it's a board, I'm just trying, we're trying to get a handle on this, roughly about ten events.
Ten events in twenty twenty-two, ten event days.
Ten, ten event days.
And there were two big ones.
Yeah, and some more sizable than others.
Yeah, one, definitely more sizable than others. We host a soccer tournament. You know, we don't run it, we host it in May. That is over the first of two days, it's a hundred and forty teams. It was, it's gigantic. And that's our, that's the largest event that's held up there by by three times. And then the the next
What age?
All, all, all ages.
How are the lacrosse ones?
There, we, we've had a pretty good year. You know, our tournaments have had between, you know, twenty-five and thirty teams on one day to sixty spread out over two days.
And what about the mud run this year?
Mud run was good. We had seven hundred and fifty participants, probably about two hundred and fifty other people that were there between spectators and volunteers. Which is actually not our our largest model, it was about fifteen hundred participants. The last, I'd say, four or five years, we've run anywhere from six hundred to eight hundred and fifty.
It's gonna, it's gonna vary from year to year.
It is. I think we're, I think we've kind of hit a stride where I can, I sort of expect it to be between seven fifty and nine fifty for, you know, for as long as we keep doing it.
And the opera, just so, you know, for again, for informational purposes, the primary months of operation are from, was it April?
I'd say April, May until October. We have a few families that'll stay with us in November, but they're not, they're not the reason for us meeting here.
Yeah. Uh, 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 in terms of event days, you're generally speaking, weekend?
Almost always weekends, Saturdays and Sundays. The soccer tournament is on a Friday, Saturday.
Okay, so so basically, what we're talking about, just for purposes of this, about ten weekend days per year, okay. Mr. Bullard, just a point of informa- point of information. We've, we've gotten some information. Do, should we be opening the seeker now, or should we open to the public?
I would, I would open the public hearing and conduct the seeker inside the public hearing, so they can hear the board contemplate environmental questions, and then maybe have them an opportunity to respond before you vote on how to answer all the secret questions.
Okay, well, and
I would do that first before any vote on the ultimate.
Oh, absolutely. I I just, again, want to get order processed right, and, you know, we had a certain way of doing things, and then, you know, we have new legal counsel, and we like to comply with how you like things done, you know, there's a certain, you know, way of doing things. Everybody has, it's a little bit different.
I think if the audience hears you go through the seeker analysis a little bit, it's good, and then you give them a chance to contemplate things, and then you render a seeker vote. I think it's awfully fair.
Yeah, well, in in terms of the seeker, okay. I I I also want to be clear on that. Now, we
Why don't you tell them exactly what a seeker is?
So the state, Environmental Quality Review Act, okay. You you filled out a short form, actually got amended last, last
The last meeting.
Public meeting.
Right.
So, I mean, we have to go through that whole process before we even get to the change of, again, order, process, and procedure, you know. But, Mr. Bullard, in two thousand nine, and this is, I I just want to be clear on it, two thousand nine, we, there was a full environmental assessment. Okay, we're talking a full form, not a short form, conducted by planning. This amendment or change, okay, that they're seeking, is actually scaled down from what was previously approved. From what I can see, maybe others feel differently, but the cabins aren't built, the outbuildings aren't built, the number of fields are smaller, what have you. Do, do we have to do, so we don't have to go through the full, do we have to go through the full assessment?
No, this, this project was already fully approved. I think what's happening here, as a courtesy to the community, the applicant has come in voluntarily, and because there's a possibility of a change of intensity during some traffic events, whether it's ten days a year or whatever, they volunteered to come in and do an amended application. When you do an amended special use permit, you're supposed to have a seeker with it. It was already a type one. This one, I
This is unclassified, correct?
An unlisted action, in my opinion, because this seeker here only contemplates the change of use that the foundation has identified has been an actual change in intensification since the original.
Since it, just the change of intent. So we're really dealing primarily with traffic-related issues?
Well, you can, you can open it up. There's, there's actually more questions than that, but that's my understanding is what the biggest neighborhood concern might be.
Okay.
The overall usage, though, of the the property is less than what, as I understand.
You, you couldn't independently have made the foundation come back and redo seeker, unless there were significant changes to operations. So what's happening here is you jointly identified a tweak in intensity somewhere, and you're being as responsive as you can. That's the way I see it.
Yeah, well, well, I see it. I, well, I just want to be on the same page because so I I guess at this point, I I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'd request that you guide us gently through the seeker process. We, we good?
Yep, as long as you vote for the public hearing, I'm ready to go.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I'm just taking
You stay, yeah, I see, and I know, and and previous council didn't require us to do it. So that's, that's, I'm just getting used to the new
Up to the next port level enough where I know they appreciate.
Absolutely. So I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second it.
We have a second and jury?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we have a unanimous vote in favor of opening the public hearing. Take us, take us through. See, see, it's just, it's just a difference of counsel, and and everybody has a different way of doing it, and I want to comply with how you like things done. So let's roll.
I just want to comply with Judge Yano.
That's
So this board has already received a part one seeker, a short form called an S E A F. You should all have that in your packets, right? That was the part one. The applicant filled that out. This is what's called a part two. You've done, you guys have done this at this board before, but it might have been a while, right? So
Yeah, I I gotta tell you, we're we're generally not lead agency.
Yep.
Okay, and we
Every cell power.
Yeah. Yeah.
So what I'm handing you is a part two, and these are just questions as a board you have to answer, and I'm going to run through them really quickly. Because you actually have to answer, on the back, there's one page of part two. There's a, a one-page part two, the top page. There's answers on here that either the uses, the questions, the eleven questions are either no impact whatsoever on the environment or a small impact. Okay, so that would be the first column, no or small. If we ask a question and you say no or small, that's where the check mark goes. If there's a moderate to large impact, it goes in the second column, okay? The last page is the part three. That's the determination of significance. That's the form that this board will contemplate issuing a final vote on, and I have a resolution prepared for that, and you're going to circle whatever your responses are.
Okay.
So with regards to this project, unless you have any questions, we're just going to get into it.
Let's get into it.
Okay, question number one, will the proposed action, when we talk about the action, if you look back at the way the description was on the part one, it says the action is we would like to modify our special use permit to reflect the realization of the competitive recreational field sports facilities that were included in the original application. That's what the action is. Okay, we're on the same page on that. So will the proposed action, the amendment of the special use permit, create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And by the way, this form is all gets to be your answers. Councils, the way council fills it out, engineers fill out, doesn't even matter. This is all your vote. So with regards to adopted land use or zoning regulations, if it's permitted in the zone, and it's already been approved, this amendment, I'm not sure what this, whether you feel this amendment does anything to that.
Personally, I'm, I guess I, you know, since I'm sitting at the end of the table, I'll say first, no.
Okay, so would you make a motion for no or small impact?
I'll make, I want to, it's just that do, will there be discussion on that?
If you'd like to.
Okay, well, I just want to, I want to, I want everybody a chance to 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 make a any comment. I mean, I I intend to make that motion. Anybody see anything differently?
No.
And and, you know, because if you do, you know, speak up or forever hold the peace, so to, sort of, okay, then I'm going to make, I'm going to make that motion that this proposed action will not create a material conflict for land use or zoning regulations.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
I
Yes, the opposed. Okay, so that would be selected no or small. So right in that column, you'd select that. Next one, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? And for frame of reference, David just went through the original approvals. So the action is the amended special use permit. Right, what I just read, the 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 description of the action is what I read off the part one. It's the modifying the special use permit to reflect the realization of competitive recreational field sports facilities and how they've changed since the original application. So if that's the action, incremental increase in intensity or certain days, then the question is, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land? Might say, well, by its own wording, it it sort of does. Then the next question is, is it a small impact? This is the crux of this, I think, a lot of this application, or is it moderate to large?
So, yeah.
The use of land is small.
The use is small. I I, you know, I
When, when we speak to that, would we be speaking to the use of the premises or the use of the land use, including the traffic and
There's a traffic question.
Land use is separate.
Yeah.
So I I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion that the proposed action will result will not result in a change of use or intensity of the use of the land.
I'll second that.
And that's a no or small?
No.
It's the same thing. Okay. There's a motion and a second.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I stepped on your toes on the first one. You're supposed to call the vote, aren't you?
Yeah, that's, well, you know what?
I'm retracting.
See, I, here's the, here's the funny part about it. Previous council, we did not vote on each, each of the items individually. I'm okay with doing
And I'm not used to, I'm not used to boards making motions, but when I said make a motion, that's fine. What what I often do is say, and I saw, see a show of hands of how many people say
I wouldn't, I would prefer that.
Let me do that. That's what I intended, but that's fine. So everybody here, a show of hands for no or small impact? Okay, that's unanimous. Number three, will the proposed action impair the quality, the, excuse me, the character or quality of the existing community? So again, this is just the amendment of the special use permit. The previous seeker was already completed for the whole project.
I think it's a small impact as well. I don't know how others feel.
Yes, I agree.
So a show of hands for no or small impact? Okay, and show of hands for moderate to large. Okay, that's five to one. So that would be checked, no or small. Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? And I'm not familiar that this was a CEA. I don't think under seeker, when you did this under the, I don't believe it was a CEA, sensitive area.
Sensitive area, no.
Okay. So logically, so no or small impact, show of hands for no or small impact? Okay, and that was unanimous. The next one, number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
Hmm, now that, that, that's a little bit different.
I have a question. This originally back in two thousand and eight is prior to them getting the fields and everything running, there was hardly any impact at all. Then, over the past Then over the past. Seven or eight years. The traffic has increased, but it hasn't increased anymore. It's kind of stayed at the same. Level the past four or five years. So when it comes to that, I'm saying it's a, it'd be a small.
Yeah, will, will the change, would the change be different than what's been running for the last four or five years? Is that, is that the inquiry or is it, or, or is the inquiry something else?
I think the inquiry is what was contemplated when this project was first approved for seeker. And first approved as a project. What, 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 I think the applicants come in and said, some things, we've changed a little, we haven't built everything out, but we're focusing on these things. And to the extent we need to come in here and amend this for these things, that's our action here. And we want to be as forthcoming as possible. So I think it's the amendment. Uh, and development of the sports fields and tournaments when you're answering the traffic question.
And were you expecting that kind of participation, like the numbers of people in the original?
So I was not part of the organization.
Okay, but was that what?
My understanding of that period of time is that, um, they were.
Sure. At what level of usage, I guess?
Um, I think the, the plan was always full term, well, how successful they would be was questionable, but, um, the plan was always to have.
See, and, and, and that's where, that's where I'm having the issue because it. Yes, are these more successful or is, yes, is there more traffic? Yes, is there more congestion? Yes, there is more noise. The question is, is there more than what was originally contemplated? Given the fact that they only built. Five fields out instead of seven that were originally improved and all of the additional facilities.
And they didn't put it in the baseball fields. Cause that was originally.
Right, there's a lot.
Well, that's what I mean. Originally, that would have been a, a lot larger due to the fact that they had intended on having baseball tournaments there. From all age groups.
In addition to the soccer.
In addition to everything else.
Addition to everything else. So it's actually scale, I mean. Yes. It's being used more now. But that's only because.
That's starting to be realized.
It's, it's starting, yeah, it's starting to be realized what was originally anticipated.
So what was, was originally anticipated probably could have been much greater than exists today.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What, what you're seeing is the applicant has voluntarily. Come in and filled out this seeker form that says, we would like to modify our special use permit to reflect the realization of what's occurring. I think it's a courtesy to the community.
Yeah.
And I think if you're going to do an environmental review on that. I don't think you have to read too much back into the original application. I think you may be correct that what was originally contemplated could have been much greater. But I, but I'm not sure that everybody back in the day, especially the neighbors, really realized the scope and scale of everything.
And that this. It may, may well not have.
And that this, for whatever reason, and this applicant has come back and say, look, we know that there's some complaining and some work we need to do. So here. Why don't you do a review? That's the way I see this. I'm.
Okay, okay, and, and so the. By, by the byproduct of the success, they, they, they've moderately impacted.
Right.
And that's, and how I would characterize that as a, as a moderate impact, not a lot, or, or small, or, or, no, no, but. Given the fact that we knew originally in two thousand nine, what was planned. It's just hadn't been realized because they hadn't been using it and then it ultimately got built out. So, I mean, from originally anticip- anticipated. At most, I, I, I see a moderate impact.
So what I handed out to you just now was a thing called the seeker workbook, part of, part of the D E C's seeker work workbook. And those of us that do this, we're living. We, we fall back on this every step of the way and we enter this into the record. This is what should be guiding your decision making. You have two pages here, and if you go at the bottom of page one, I circled it online, but you can see in boldface, it says. If there is an impact, how big will it be? That paragraph is where you should start here. And it says, if there will be an impact, any reviewing agency must then evaluate the magnitude of that impact. This will depend upon the overall scale and context. Okay, so you have to look at the scope and scale. And Dave, when you're talking about the original approval and then now what's occurring now. I think that's a scope and a scale analysis.
I, I do, and I, I, and, and the, the, the issue is that it was originally anticipated. To possibly be greater than what. What's occurring now. And, and in that sense, the impact is, is small to none. But, or minimal, but. Again, they're here voluntarily recognizing that the neighbors have been imposed upon to a certain degree. And have put up with some things. And so, you know, here, do the, do the right thing as a, as a good neighbor, which is nice to see for a change. Um, and. That's where I'm getting, that's where I'm getting.
Hugs up, and it's all correct, and it's all okay.
I think it's still.
It's all okay.
A small. After reviewing this and reviewing this, it's a smaller moderate, it, it's not a moderate to large impact. And, and, and Jerry, look at on the top of page two, the four bullet points.
The next, the next page, page is, is what guides you. It says, it gives you examples. If something is a small impact, if. There's three bullet points, the project, the impact is small. If the project will add traffic to the area, but roads have the capacity to handle that level of traffic. By the way, this is right from D E C. And I deal with this on every big project. We do small projects. Next one, the project will, a small impact if the project will increase the demand for public transportation. But the existing system has the capacity to handle that increase. Um, three, the project will increase the demand for sidewalks, bike pads, bike lanes, bike racks. But existing bicycle pedestrian facilities have the capacity to handle the increase or the proposed project provides new connection points. So they, this is guidance, it's not set in stone. This is guidance. The D E C says it's probably a small impact. If any of those are true. And then it goes on to say moderate to large impacts may occur if the project adds substantial traffic to the area. The project adds traffic, but not substantial traffic to the area, but due to current conditions, the road does not have the capacity to handle. Three, the project will create a demand for public transportation when none currently exists and does not have the capacity to handle it. And four, the project will create a demand for pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure where either none currently exists, or, or they do not have the capacity to handle.
Based, based on that. It seems to me that it's a small impact recording. I mean, yes, there's going to be increase in traffic. Or there, yeah, but the roads, you know, clearly we, we, the road capacity is designed to, to hold that.
So this is the ultimate question, uh, how you answer number five. This is your workbook guidance that you have in your hand, so there's no other.
Let's discuss, let's discuss board, okay?
Yeah, I mean, what? So here's the other thing I think you would have to look at with substantial traffic to the area. Is it? And this is my reading into it, substantial sustained traffic. This is not.
This is not, this is, this is though.
So when I look at, uh, small, project will add traffic, but the road's capacity, that's what we have from the engineer. And. The substantial traffic to the area determining part one, question eight. Don't think that lines up. Um. When you look at that in context with the rest of them. It, it does seem to imply. An ongoing sustained hardship.
And it is, and it's, and that's not.
To get, to me, to get to substantial.
We're talking ten days. Out of a three hundred and sixty-five day year. We're talking increased on those days for a road that is designed. Well within the capacity of that. As a matter of fact, the road can handle crowd, my guess. Much more than what's generated by these events. I mean, what, Jim, what do you think?
It's not, like you say, it's not running seven days a week.
No, it's not a sustained type of thing. It's. It's a, it's a pattern issue.
Right.
Sean, any thoughts?
It's substantial traffic, but only for that short period. It's not sustained.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree. Jerry. That meets the New York state criteria for small.
So the other thing I was going to add is when you kind of look at some of these scenarios down below, notice. Construction of retail office complex. So that's going to have substantial number of cars each day. Uh, you know, that, that's kind of where, you know, construction of fifty residential units.
Well, yeah, and see, and see, and, and going back to my prior point, none of the residential and, and housing units got built. And again, that contemplated a more sustained and regular course of traffic to the site. And it was previously approved and, and thought that the impact was relatively mine. So. So. In terms of, um.
I'd just say small impact. After reviewing.
Can, can, can we have a, uh, did I ask for a show of hands who believes based on what we've heard and what we've seen that this? The traffic will be a small impact, or at least according to the standards here.
Yep.
Unanimous, okay. And that, that, that contemplates your review of the environmental record you have in front of you, including. The testimony from the neighbors. And the testimony from the applicant, including their traffic engineer encompasses all of that.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we, we, we wouldn't be devoid of that. We, we, we've, we've received and entered into our file, the traffic. Engineers' analysis. I, I actually think it goes beyond that because we've also reached out to the county. Uh, their highway department asked for design capabilities of the roadway. And while they did not reply, they put us onto a site where D E C actually measures the. Average daily volume of traffic on that roadway. And. And we've actually, um, pulled some of that up. Uh, and have data on it, uh, and, um, we, we have looked at that and, and discussed it.
Okay.
Yes, we're not negating that there will be added traffic because it does say it will be a small impact.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, overall column is either there's no impact or a small amount of impact. You know, what I think you just voted on is it's a small impact.
Yeah.
Because of the, um, sporadic nature of it.
Sporadic, because not sustained.
Um, everybody good on that? David, you're good?
Yes.
Five were completed.
Yes.
Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable opportunities?
I, I, I think that there, there should be self-evident, but you, you gotta show a hands that that would be a small impact. Thank you, that's not.
So that was unanimous. Um, so number seven, will the proposed action impact existing public and private water supplies or public, private wastewater treatment utility systems?
And, and again, that, you know, the change is going to be not. I mean, it's, it, we're talking, we're talking to realize the. What, what was currently going on there? So do we have a show of hands in terms of that being a small impact?
Okay, that's a unanimous vote. Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical? Archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
They believe that one ahead. I'm sorry, but I don't see it. It's small.
Unanimous, I saw the show of hands.
Uh, may, may, may have a show of hands to, to, to wonder why D E C puts us through this.
Well, other projects that may be coming for you, you will, you. Uh, well, number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater? Air quality, flora and fauna?
Again. I, you know, it's my feeling. I don't know those that the board, but it's a relatively small or, or no impact whatsoever.
Okay, show of hands, six, zero. Number ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
Anybody want to step up on that one? I think that's a big no.
Show of hands on that, please. Six, zero. Finally, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Again, no, no.
Show of hands, please. That would be six, zero. So that's the completion of a draft part two. Part three only gets filled out when you take your final vote and then they have the chairman sign it.
Okay.
Right. If you felt like there were any other, um, written reasons to. Uh, add descriptions of any of your, uh, comments on there. I have a thing called a part three attachment, which I could add your comments to. So I put in your seat part three attachment. You don't have to have one. So just your votes alone on this form signed by the chairman can be good enough. But you're completed with the preliminary discussion. Now, if you wanted to open it up or.
Or open to the public for comment?
If there's any.
I, I'm this particular environmental issue.
Yeah, because what I just, what I just sort of classified that as, is a preliminary completion of that. And then maybe if you hear from anybody. And you want to change any of your answers, you could. And then finally, I have a resolution for you to consider when you're done with that.
Excellent. So at this point in the, in the process, I'd invite public comment on this. Part of the application. Um, anybody here to speak regarding any of the inquiry we did with the, uh, environmental impact statement? Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have no take, uh, council, we have no, we, we have no takers on that.
Does the application have a final comment regarding the environmental seekers? So. What this is, it's a draft resolution. David, I don't know how you like to do this. Um, it gets lengthy if you read every last thing into the record, but you can't, this is not, I tried to make it as show as possible. And what, what I did is I, I have a couple blanks in there. I'm going to need some help on. As far as the original dates on things that occurred, but, but, but I also post meeting, I always correct typos and, and fill blanks. And so. Uh, if we don't have the correct date, but Lori's in tomorrow, or you guys want to get back to me tomorrow, we can figure the dates.
Okay.
Well, 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 um.
I have multiple dates.
Jerry, let, let's, 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 let's help. Council on some of the dates first, because I think we can make short order that. Okay, we, we can, we can give you some. There, there's, there's already one change in the, in the, in the voting members that, that count, uh, uh, member, uh. Sean Johnson, Nat Jones. Okay, and so we, we'll let the.
Either the town's website or my federal legal.
You don't have to take responsibility.
That's why nobody calls you at home. He gets no calls because his name's listed.
Yeah, that's why he gets, that's right. That's why he gets no calls at home at these. But poor Sean Johnson's hearing a lot.
Also, the spelling of Jerry's first name, I think I include into that, we've got to correct that. Is that, is that accurate, Jerry?
That's, that's correct.
We're going to correct that tomorrow also. So we'll go through this and anything you want to do, I'll give you the clean and fresh version tomorrow. Lori will certify it and stamp it once it's in good shape.
Okay.
Uh, so I better, I'll take two seconds just to talk you through this. The, the first part is just a bunch of whereas is whereas and. Uh, on the original date here, in accordance with seeker, we received an application from Everest Association. So we just need in the blank to correct date on the app, the application.
The application would be.
March eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. So whereas that was, um, submitted and where the Z B A has determined it's an unlisted action under seeker. Whereas no other agency has asserted the legal authority over this matter. And whereas the applicant has previously, previously obtained a negative declaration under seeker on. After that, the original date.
I believe.
July twenty. Two thousand nine.
So in that paragraph. Seven twenty oh nine and now seeks a modification. Of its previously issued special use permit in light of changes to contemplated uses of the property. Whereas the Z B A has met with the project applicant on multiple occasions pertaining to its requested amendment. And has also noticed and held public hearings to be.
Now, Tom, do you want all the dates back to two thousand and eight?
No, sir. Uh, I was just, we've continued this several times and I thought we could squeeze those.
Okay, okay.
So what the, what the sentence says, and we have also noticed and held public hearings that are properly convened Z B A meetings. At Town Hall on blank, blank and blank dates, twenty twenty-two. So we'll just have to fill in those dates. During which public hearings, the Z B A elicited input and evidence from members of the public, the applicant. And any other involved or interested parties. And whereas official notice of the public hearings was advertised in the Auburn Citizen newspaper for the required period of time. Next page, where the Z B A is carefully and fully considered the environmental. Next page, whereas the ZBA is carefully and fully considered the environmental record. Prepared for this action, including but not limited to all application materials submitted together with any and all comments received from the public and involve their interested agencies. And I would say that the environmental record would include that data that you compiled and the traffic report and put it in the binder clip for Lori right in the back of this. And I think that's the record. Uh, whereas after reviewing and completing a part two on October seventeenth tonight, during a properly convened ZBA meeting and after reviewing the criteria for determining significance set forth in six seventeen seven of the seeker regs and analyzing the relevant areas of environmental concern, the ZBA has determined that the project
Will not.
Will or will not.
Will not.
Your board is gonna have to circle that on a penultimate vote here. Create any significant adverse environmental impacts. And then the the body of the of the resolution is all of those recitals are adopted. The ZBA for the town of Owosco will or will not state that the project, the amendment will or will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and therefore an environmental impact statement will or will not be um undertaken. And then finally, your determination of significance shall be reflected on the secret part as a positive declaration or a negative declaration. And then it authorizes the chairman to all sign paperwork, to sign all the paperwork. So what I typically recommend is that somebody on the board, Mr. Calabanca, make the ultimate vote as to whether or not this application should receive a positive declaration, which means there's moderate to large impacts and it must undertake an environmental impact statement. Or there's a negative declaration saying, uh, there's nothing significant enough to warrant that. And and once you take that vote amongst your board, then you can circle all the rest of them. You'll have somebody move this into a conclusion. Is that complicated enough?
Yeah, it's definitely complicated enough. So, but you know, I just want to take the bull by the horns and keep this moving. So. I'm going to move. That. The board issue a negative declaration for purposes of the state Environmental Quality Review Act that this uh change proposed by the applicant will have no or minimal impact on the environment. I'll do a roll call though, Jim.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Kathy. Steve.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Can I ask you for a slight modification of the board? And I apologize that also that you adopt this resolution as corrected because I got some corrections produced to it. Is that acceptable as part of the motion?
Yes, we can. We can add to that motion that the I'll add that the the changes um be adopted. The fairness that.
Yep, I've got blanks to fill in. I've got to do the circling and everything. I'll clarify it and get it to you. So as part of the motion is that this resolution is adopted as amended.
As amended.
I'm good.
Should I do a recount, Jim?
You don't have to do roll call, but whatever, yeah.
Well, let me go showing hands. Is everybody satisfied with that? Thank you. We got a unanimous. Okay, next order of business. Now that, um, well, so this this board has basically authorized us to to, for me to sign the appropriate documents then to certify negative negative declarations, am I correct?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna have you sign the part three before I leave tonight.
Very good. Next step, Mr. Blair.
We would move on to, I think the board wants to consider a resolution for the special use permit amendment.
Yes.
And if you'd like to do that, you can close the public hearing at this stage since you've already gone through secret and you've elicited the input. If you'd like, you can close the public hearing and just move on to this vote outside the public hearing or keep it right inside the, help you.
Well, I I'd rather keep, keep it, keep it open.
Okay.
Okay, and um, that, I mean, is is it appropriate at this time to to seek any additional public comment or or? Uh, I I I just based on some of the, I don't want to rehash anything that was previously done, but um um, if there's any additional public comment either for or against, I I'd like to hear it limited to five minutes or or maybe three minutes per. Um, I mean, we've we've heard from Mr. Buller, but maybe he has a comment about the engineering study or or assessment, I, you know, or or others. Any anybody uh care to make additional comments? Absolutely. Come on up.
Jan Buller. I just, is there anything going to be in writing that limits them on the number of events they can have during the year to ten? Or at some time, will that increase?
Well, I think I think what the board is going to do when when a motion is put on the floor with a special permit, we can impose conditions upon the applicant.
What what condition would that be?
Well, that that's, that's what we're, that's what we're gonna be discussing. You know, we wanted to get your public input as to what you perhaps you think that there should be a limit on it, and I'd like to hear that if 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 you if you have that comment so that we can at least consider that as part of this application.
That Melissa has tried to reduce the traffic. It really has not been very noticeable, though.
We we haven't been home either.
Well, we have been home for. And I know that one day that we can, you're almost when you get your yard worked on. He tried to mow the lawn and the hill. He had to go up and run, turn around, and the eight minutes it took him, and I had, he had a video of it, but unfortunately I don't have it with me. The eight minutes it took him to mow that lawn, that was just around the day where he had split. Turn around, skewy.
Mm hmm.
Which was Saturday. Day. Was it July?
Yeah.
Anyway, the eight minutes it took him to mow the lawn, I had to stand out there and watch the traffic. Seventeen cars went by in two minutes. All heading towards Everest Park. There is a lot of cars in two minutes.
You had your engineer up there. Why was it, why didn't he come there? It would have been on Saturday or Sunday. They don't probably work on a Saturday or Sunday. And actually, look at what's going on.
I.
Wouldn't that be good? Is that a good, fair question?
Well, I I think, I I think it's always a fair question that, you know, a a a any concern is that you have is a fair, fair comment or question. I think what you're gonna find, I think you're gonna find that board members. I know Mr. Jones, I know I have, I know other board members have endeavored on event days to take a personal look see to see where traffic's coming from, the nature and extent of traffic. And, you know, to get a better feel for this, and I imagine, I I believe we have a board member that lives, she lives on the road, so would would probably personally see that. Oh, um, what's going on? So, yeah, I mean, it's 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 fair. It's 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 a fair comment.
I mean.
And 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 I guess the comment is that has in fact been done.
But if he showed up at, you know, one, two in the afternoon, I can tell you right now, the only thing that goes down that road that time of day are the farmers and the tractor. Okay. And that's on a weekday. We're talking about the weekend. And when I'm, our main concern has always been the number of cars. I don't care how many teams you got. I don't care how many people you got up there. Really don't. It's the volume of cars. Say it simple. Read my original complaint, reduce the number of vehicles on that road on the weekends, and you pretty much.
Solve your, solve your issue. Okay. Anything additional? Because we 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 were, that 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 point is, that point is well taken. And 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 I think the board members hear that loud and clear. Any additional, any additional information?
I'll sit down, you want me to listen?
Well, sorry.
Is in the future. Who, I mean, like in the past, nobody, there was no checks and balances. There was nobody checking on things to see if they were complying. I mean, if you look, go back, and we're not, like you said, we're not gonna hash old stuff, but do your homework, go back. So, uh, no more than twenty cars per hour, I think that was, no more than ten, fifteen cars in the parking lot anytime.
Yeah, I.
That, you know, so that was, that was never enforced. I don't, I don't know how you would enforce it. But the reason, to be attorney here, the reason she came forward is because there was a complaint. I filed the complaint. Anybody that knows me knows I don't get involved in that stuff. I got tired of hearing the neighbors complain. So if you're gonna complain, do something about it. And I apologize to everybody here that there isn't a show of people in our road. They all said they were gonna do this, that, and the other thing, a lot of our senior citizens, but when it came to put up or shut up, you're okay.
Okay, ours, yeah, understood.
To give her credit. It never, never was against Everest Park. Like we.
I know.
Before I donated to the cause.
Yeah, and 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 we got that fully, your flavor there fully.
I think, you know, I I would like to see somebody at least maybe once or twice, maybe go up there and see how things are going. You know, you don't have to tower your thumb. I I don't know who would do it. It's gonna be on the weekend. You know, so again, just.
Thank you. All right. Any additional comments, Mr. Smith? I I recognize who you are.
People want to admit that. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Matthew Smith, uh, head man's lacrosse coach here at Auburn uh, for the past eight years. And I'd just like to go back, if we could, to two thousand twenty, and I almost mentioned this earlier. Everything was shut down, as we all know. My son tried to go down to Clifford Park and he had the police called on him because he brought a basketball to the basketball court. He was just dribbling around. I had a hundred and ten, hundred and ten, hundred and twenty kids sign up for our summer lacrosse camp. And one of the things that we were starting to see is that kids were usually have like a hundred and forty. The kids were starting to become comfortable and isolate themselves. And Everest Park came along and said, listen, we're gonna deal, along with Melissa and her staff, uh, they provided this venue for all of us, all right, for for our young kids from kindergarten all the way up to seniors in high school. And this venue was was open for us to play. And what, and you know, the question that you guys mentioned was, uh, did it pair with the quality of the of the community? Uh, it does the opposite. Everest Park enhances the quality of the community. They have been successful. Yes, there is more traffic. Why is there more traffic? There's more traffic because they've created something that's very successful for this community. Cost is this. Okay, it's a positive cost. If we if we had to make a list of all the positive things that came from this, all right, you'd be checking each box. All right, so we look, is there a negative impact? Yeah, there's been a significant impact. There's been a significant impact on enhancing the quality of the community. All right, I I I fear for the day when there's not traffic. And if that traffic, that means no one's traveling. Kids, kids are, kids are not playing on an open field. You're providing a valuable service to young kids so they have the opportunity to play. And what are you attracting? This is not a, uh, this is not a bar. This is not a strip mall. Okay, what you're attracting are families. Mothers, fathers, children, grandparents coming to watch young kids participate in sport. That that's the issue that we're, that's being discussed here. I think we need to enhance that. We need to encourage that. Because that's providing something positive for the community. You don't have to worry about bar fights. It's not a, it's not a, a a concert that's taking place where you're having drunken riots all over. You are bringing families to come, all right, for a short period of time, seven weekends. If I remember correctly, it's fifty three weekends out of the year. We're talking about seven weekends here. Where we're in town of Owosco is providing valuable service, all right, to not just the people here in Kewa County, not just to the businesses in Owosco, the businesses in Auburn, but people from all around the area come here and they talk about how beautiful Everest Park is. Then they start asking questions. What's that home for? All right, then they find out, hey, this is what that home's for. Then they start donating. All right, to help some family who's unfortunately going through a terrible uh health situation. So this is nothing but a positive thing. And my father lives on O'Neil Road. Okay, and there's probably twenty cars that go down there in five minutes. All right, it's like the autobots are crying out loud, but that's life. All right, so I I I thank the board for giving me the opportunity and I'm entirely grateful for um, for Champions for Life and and everything that they provide for us.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Any any additional comments? Ms. Brady.
Good evening. Um, my name is Karen Simmons Brady and I am the head track and field and cross country coach at Auburn High School, and I'm also a lifelong resident of Owosco. I don't live in the immediate vicinity of um, of Everest Park, but uh, the end of Swardout Road, so I do see the impact um, locally from the traffic and um, and I just wanted to express my personal opinion on on the situation. Um, just as I admire, respect, and enjoy the fruits of labor of the farming community as a resident of Owosco, I have thoroughly enjoyed Everest Park and the wonderful running trails, the cross and soccer field it provides. Not to mention the invaluable surface made available to families with children with life altering medical issues. I have frequently been one of the greater cars on a few weekends a year, large events are being held along with many other families headed up to enjoy a beautiful scenic venue, watching their children participate in sports. As someone who runs on these Owosco country roads on a near daily basis for the majority of my lifetime, I embrace the minor inconveniences that the farming and Everest Park traffic event present to me personally and value the work of both as a huge benefit to our community. I pay taxes that contribute to the maintenance of these roads and feel that my voice is important to any other taxpayer when it comes to their use. I live on a road that the town does not maintain. Decisions regarding the care of my road fall on the people that cover the expenses, not just a select few. On a larger scale, it's my opinion, the decisions as to issues such as this should reflect the wishes of the entire community that contributes to its maintenance. While I understand and respect the opinions expressed here, I do not think they reflect the opinion of the community as a whole. The people at Everest Park have gone well above and beyond to pay modified traffic and expect them to revamp their entire business plan to accommodate a few scenes unreasonable and honestly detrimental to their business and charity services it provides. Hundreds of families, many that reside here in us, Owosco, benefit from all that Everest Park has to offer. Sports, camping, and a precious escape from the harsh realities of life altering medical struggles. And it's my opinion that most of this community would agree. I I do believe that the basis for discontent doesn't really boil down to concerns for the road structure, but a resistance to change, which I can appreciate. I've spent my entire life outside of reading from my education residing in the town of Owosco. A lot has changed over the years. I used to be able to ride down East Lake Road on my bicycle with friends at the age of seven or eight to get ice cream at Tom's without traffic concerns. Housing developments such as Martin Point in the in the woodlands have popped up in the areas where I used to attend Camp La Owosco. And the houses on the coast of Owosco have gone from shacks to big, beautiful year round residences. The addition of Everest Park has been one of the most positive changes I've observed. All of these changes have altered the landscape of our community and may have come with some inconveniences, but all point to an evolving community that is healthy and growing. Making the decision to raise my own family in Owosco was an easy one. Convincing my husband, who's an outsider, um, was just as easy. My brother also returned to Owosco after living in Ecuador for many years to raise his family here. When we had a house fire several years ago, we relocated and were adamant about remaining in Owosco, moved a mile down the road. We love everything that Owosco has to provide, and that includes the beautiful farmland and Everest Park and all the positive changes that have taken place and will continue to play, take place in the coming years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean. Yes, we will, we will, yeah, if if you could leave that behind, we'll make it part of the record. Otherwise, it's recorded in, but you know, it's it's much better to have. Um, any additional public commentary? Board, I guess it's 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 time.
Tom, do you think I should read this whole thing?
Uh, probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
It's probably a good, it's a probably a good idea. So, well. Um, I'm gonna ask, uh, we've been through, we've been through a lot with this already. I'm gonna ask that there be a motion. I want to have discussion on that and what, uh, should we have a discussion first or?
Um. I think that somebody should make a motion before your discussion. Do you want to get inside the public hearing or close your public hearing, do you think?
I'm okay. I, you know, I always, I always like to leave everything rolling. That, then then no one, no one can say.
All right. I'll make a motion to amend the current special use permit to Everest Associates for Family Enhancement Incorporated at fifty three forty three North Road. North Road, Auburn, New York, one three zero two one, tax map. One three two point zero zero dash zero one dash one eight. Dash two one one with the following conditions. Events of a hundred or more participants. Observers and officials will be a notice of fourteen days prior to the event. To the town of Owasco, the Owasco Fire Department, local law enforcement agencies. And it was also brought to my attention about uh the official newspaper of the town, which would be. Uh the citizen. Just a notification in there that on such and such a date, you're having one of your, which you already do.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, aside from the the newspaper, we are already.
Right, and then the Everest Park Association providing this event schedule. To the town of Owasco, Owasco Fire Department, local law enforcement agencies. And the official newspaper of the town no later than January thirty first of the. Current year because I know you put out that yearly. Thing, just as long as they have something here and with the fire department because they cover you.
That that's fine. If it changes, do you, I mean.
Just notify. We have reviewed numerous meeting minutes since two thousand and eight. Code of Town Owasco Public Hearing Minutes and Records, numerous studies and correspondence, as well as. Input from the neighbors and general public. Also a negative declaration of the C Corps. There will be no major change to the neighborhood. The organization of Everest Park is the definite asset to the whole community. Offering many programs and access to a broad range of constituents.
Any discussion?
We wanted to see if there's a second to the motion.
Oh, sorry, that that we got a second, Steve. Sorry, I I'm used to Lori doing it.
I guess on the discussion, I'd say when you're, I think you already answered the question, Jerry, but. It's a tentative schedule. They're not.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I mean, that the idea is to give adequate notice to. The town and the residents so that. They know.
Also include in there. Cause the original application had a mitigation efforts that they continue those. Like that the notices go to the participants, encouraging them to go other ways, that type of stuff. Should that be in the motions that they continue whatever mitigations or?
I don't feel it's necessary. Wha- what I actually did is I took three different GPSs. And typed in their address from Syracuse. Um Moravia in Auburn. And I don't know what it is with these computers, but believe it or not, they all send you the same way, just about. Even the ones on your cell phone. So I mean. Having them do that, they've done everything they possibly can do. We can't tell the drivers that they can't travel on a public road. I mean, if somebody wants to add that, I I don't know.
Have you any thoughts on that, whether any uh additional traffic mitigation measures? That's what I'm asking.
No, I just think that they would continue whatever they try, probably I I kinda feels like they're doing it.
Enforcement notification so that patrols and things of that nature can help the residents of the the area. Help help mitigate some of the some of the issue.
Are there any other limitations we want to put on the?
Do you have anything?
Were there any on the original? Not really, right?
No, there was the original is wide open. That's in in the number of one hundred was just uh. Cause I know they've had, they have other things up there too where.
There's much more.
And all there's twenty five, fifty people. And anything that was requested by the Owasco Fire Department. Has been corrected and provided and that was done five years ago.
Anybody else have any thoughts on limitations, conditions?
Mr. Chair, did did you mention anything about the number of events? In the conditions?
It was not discussed.
I don't know, would it be tough to have a hard number?
Yeah, that what that's how you gotta have a little bit of flexibility. I mean, I I guess if the use changes any any considerable. Beyond what we're currently anticipating and which is, you know, somewhere between ten and twelve events that. They would, they would have to come back.
May I, I, you know, so we ten and twelve events could take place over the course of. I think we need to really be clear about events and days. Um you know, we have, we host other organizations and they might, we might not have that on the calendar right away. We might not know until approach of those dates. Um I'm, you know, obviously. Not surprisingly, in favor of not adding that restriction to the number of events because. We really don't know what the response to those um those events. To say, you know, we can only hold ten, we might have one that's got, you know, a hundred and fifty people. And oh no, there goes, that's a, that's a lot of revenue when we look at how we're gonna support our organization in the house, so. It's limiting it to those. That's really, that would be really hard for us.
So.
That's why we, that's why originally it was put down a hundred participants, observers. So I mean. That could happen at any time.
It could and we and we will continue as far as the.
As long as you notify fourteen days prior to.
Is a hundred too low. Is a hundred part, I don't, I just.
A hundred people is is about probably about four teams. And when you consider the volunteers, the officials, the parents, the players.
So do you want to increase the number?
I think it would be more prudent to do that.
Cause at four teams, you could have a ad hoc get together that wouldn't impact anybody. So it, cause what you're concerned, what we, this whole thing's been around is not the number of that, it's the number of larger.
Yeah, I mean, that that's the concern is the larger events. The the bigger, the bigger stuff is what. You know, is causing the issue.
Five hundred is probably in the range of twenty, twenty five teams, which typically our typical tournament might be twenty or twenty five teams.
What number do you want to put?
So are you moving, Kathy, are you moving to amend the motion to to change that to? To one hundred to five hundred?
Cause then at least two that you're looking at.
The intensity of it.
If the idea is that somebody's looking for a public notice or something. If you put it at a hundred, it might just show every week and you, I I don't know.
Yeah, I I.
I think of the intent of Jerry's. Motion is, and I think we all agree is that these large events are what's causing the disruption. The better notification on those large events, then.
Yeah.
If the business model changes that you had these small events. Multiple days, it doesn't seem to bother.
I can go along, I can go along with that if if it's increased to a hundred or move. Or five hundred, I mean. To amend that. Everybody, a- any other thoughts and conditions? I'd like to call, uh we've we've got a motion, we got a second reflecting the change to from one hundred to five hundred. I I like to call the vote, Jim.
Yes.
Kathy. Steve.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
And me, I'm a yes.
Motion, Jerry.
Motion's carried. I'd like to clo- I like it to move to close the public hearing. I'm learning now slowly, but learn. We have everybody in favor of closing the public hearing. I have a motion to adjourn this meeting. Yeah, I didn't. No.
We were gonna have one in July, but they canceled, they were out of town. I think it was only that once, on May sixteenth and then everything.
Then we, no, then we moved and then it got adjourned because the engineer was not ready. And and then it got adjourned because of Mr. Carbonaro's schedule. Yeah, it's right. I wanna be honest with you.